The November seventeenth city council meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Mr. Tony Cooper, Executive Director of Jimmy Hill Mission, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Almighty God, as we bow our heads, help us indeed to humble ourselves and acknowledge you as our God. You're our Abba, our Father. You're the Creator of the universe. You're the Sustainer of life. You are our rescuer, our redeemer, our comforter, our counselor, our defender, our deliverer, our source of all that is good, from whom all blessings flow. Holy is your name. Father, we pray internationally for those who are experiencing unrest and turmoil and suffering, Father, and hurting. We just pray that somehow you would reach down and minister in a special way to these that's going on in so many places around the world. For our country, dear God, I would pray that indeed, as United States, that we would repent of our sin. We would return to you and once again be one nation under God. Father, we pray for our president and our national leaders. Father, we pray for our governor and our state leaders. Here in Birmingham, we pray for our mayor and our city counselors. Father, I pray that they would be men and women of character and courage and conviction and compassion. And you would grant them the wisdom in decision-making so they can continue to make our city and the government here a better place. Father, we just ask that you would be with us now in the meeting, Father, and we pray that everything will be done according to your will. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember Lundee. Councilmember Parker. President Proton Robertson.
Morning, Ms. Clerk.
Morning. Councilmember Rafferty. Councilmember Rafferty.
Present.
Councilmember Scales.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Present. Morning, Mr. Clerk.
Morning.
The minutes are not ready from September eighth through November tenth. Do we have any nominations to the boards and agencies?
We have a set of minutes, twenty-fifth and the first that are ready.
The what now?
The twenty-fifth and the first.
Oh, yeah, and the, do we have a motion on the minutes from the twenty-fifth, August twenty-fifth through September first?
Mr. President, I'd like to move on the minutes.
Second.
Okay, voting should be open now. Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Thank you. That vote should be up, Mr. President.
All right, that item passes. Minutes are not ready from September eighth through November the tenth. Do we have any nominations to the boards and agencies?
No, sir.
The consent agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, consent agenda starts on page two. Item four was added, as well as item one, I'm sorry. So that's one and four on page two. Page three, items five, six, and seven were added, and item eight is also on consent, page four. Items nine, ten, and eleven are on consent, page five. Items ten, I'm sorry, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are on consent. Fourteen was added to the consent agenda. Page six, item seventeen was added to the consent agenda. Page seven, items eighteen and nineteen were added to the consent agendas, and items twenty and twenty-one are on the consent agenda. Page eight, items twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five are on consent. Page nine, items twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty are on consent. Page ten, items thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five are on consent. Page eleven, items thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight are on consent. On page twelve, items forty and forty-one are on consent. And on page thirteen, items forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven were added to the consent agenda.
All right, do we have any members of the council which should speak to the consent agenda? Counselor Rafferty?
On page two, item three, we amended that store number. It should have been one-four-one-seven-seven, but the address is also incorrect.
Okay, so you're gonna give that to the clerk?
Well, the problem is, is this is the wrong item that's supposed to be before us. There were two, there were two dollar stores, and so I don't have that address before me.
Mr. President, I would move that we just delay this another week until we get it correct, because this is the item that we passed, and the one we didn't pass is the one that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So I move for a one-week delay.
Okay, we're still on consent, but we'll do that when we get to the item. What else, Counselor Rafferty? Do you have anything?
That's it.
Okay, let me ask this question, Counsel. Was the item delayed until today?
No, it, yeah, the original item was delayed.
We can go, we can prepare the item and get it before the council, before the meeting's over. If it was delayed, we want to make sure it comes back like it's supposed to.
Yeah.
We'll do that.
Okay, so you're gonna get it to us before?
Yes.
So we're just gonna lay this one on the table when we get to it?
Correct.
All right, do any other council members have any items they wish to speak to? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing, you may now approach the podium. All right, we have a mover and a second.
President, before we move on, item, page seven, can you tell me which items we consented?
This item seventeen. Oh, oh, it's page seven, item eighteen and nineteen.
Okay, well, item nineteen has not been to committee.
Okay, so we'll refer that.
And we have a budget and finance committee coming, committee meeting coming up. Of course, they forgot to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Or to even request that it be put on the agenda, but I'm sure that we could put it on the agenda so that we would know about it ahead of time.
Okay. Do we have any other ones? So we'll, nineteen, we're gonna take that off consent and it'll be referred. All right, we're ready to vote. We have a mover and a second.
I move approval.
Second.
Abbott, Rafferty.
Voting should be up. That vote should be up, Mr. President.
The consent agenda passes. Item, Mr. Clerk, should be item two.
Item two?
Yes.
All right, let me get, get it here. Item two, a resolution relative to the application of Ebony Eyes Entertainment LLC for a lounge retail liquor class-one license to be used at Good Times Lounge, fifteen Twenty-One Thirty Avenue West, Birmingham, in a hearing of all parties.
Counselor Rafferty?
Yes, sir, we received communication.
President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Point of order. Like to move the item?
Thank you, sir.
I second.
You just can make the motion to refer it, that's all you have to do.
I will. Okay, so the report was to refer it back to committee due to zoning issues.
So do you have a motion?
Second.
So the motion is to refer it to Public Safety Committee, and Abbott seconded.
Okay.
Ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
It's back to Public Safety.
Yes, refer back.
Okay, let me find, refer here. All right, voting should be open. To Councilmember Abbott. Thank you. That vote should be up.
That item passes. It will be referred. Next item, item three.
Item three, a resolution relative to the application of Dolan Gore LLC for the transfer of an off-premise beer and wine license to be used at Dollar General Store, and that should be fourteen-one-seventy-seven. And I guess we're looking for the correct address, so I won't even read that part.
So we're gonna move to lay this on the table?
Second.
Mr. President,
Yes.
I would ask for a one-week delay, because there is a difference of opinion as to how the neighborhood voted. So if we can do it, defer it another week, that would be helpful.
Second. Let's get it before us first.
Let's get it before us. Move the item.
Second.
And then Counselor Abbott moves to refer it or delay it?
One, one-week delay.
Second.
Because we got Austin and Robertson for, get it on the floor, and then we had.
Mr. President, I have a point of clarity, please.
Go ahead.
Would it not be more expedient, since these are public safety items and the chairman is not here today, that we delay all of these items until his return on next week?
We don't have, this is the last one, the, um,
Last one.
It's just, it's, we're just delaying it because they have the wrong, we talked about it in pre-council, they have the wrong address, the wrong, it's just the wrong item.
Just the wrong information.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Who seconded the delay?
Robertson.
Okay, Robertson, okay, I got one week. Call it for me. All right, voting should be open. All right, that vote should be up before the one-week delay.
That item passes, one-week delay. Next item should be item fifteen.
Item fifteen. Okay, item fifteen, it's on page number six.
Six.
An ordinance to further amend the general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, by appropriating two hundred thousand dollars to non-departmental Birmingham Bowl, said funding source being miscellaneous revenue received. And it's been a request for a one-week delay, it is referred, but I still need to get it.
President?
Yes.
Like to move the item?
Second.
Robertson, Rafferty, do we have a motion to refer it to commi, to Budget and Finance Committee?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we send it to Budget and Finance, and they're, they're aware that it says it went to Budget and Finance, but it really didn't, so.
I have a second. I second it. Counselor Scales?
Yes, sir, and in case I'm not able to attend the meeting, I would ask that, Madam Chair, that you would inquire, so that I can understand where this miscellaneous revenue received, where is that coming from? I'd be interested in knowing that.
I think that's a question we would ask.
Yeah, because we just need to stop earmarking money before it gets to the city.
All right, we have a motion to refer it to Budget and Finance.
So move.
Abbott moved in our second. Ready to vote.
Abbott and.
Austin.
Thank you. Budget and Finance. All right, voting should be open now. That vote should be up.
That item passes, it will be referred to Budget and Finance. Next item, item sixteen.
All right, item sixteen. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a quick deed, I guess it should be quick claim deed.
Yes.
To William B. Esther Junior. Ister. Junior, upon receipt of payment in an amount of three thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents for the sale of property legally described as lot's five, block two fifty-eight, according to Birmingham Blocks, recorded in map book eight hundred, page one, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens in accordance with section three dash one dash four of the general code of the City of Birmingham, and I need you see if we're gonna pass it today.
President, move the item?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I need a motion on the item.
Do we have a motion on the item?
Move the item?
Second.
Robertson, Abbott, all right. Do you have any speakers to this? I just had a question, I don't know who to direct it to, maybe Mr. Bidde, or let me see. City attorney, I don't know, but where is this property? Where exactly is it located? I don't know who to. Sixteen. Yeah, because it has.
It has no address.
Yeah, it doesn't have an address.
Normally, we have an address, and they don't, they didn't put an address on here.
Or a map. We can move to lay it on the table till we find out, get a map. I have a motion to lay this on the table.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, that item be laid on the table along with item two, I think it is. All right, okay, next item, Mr. Clerk, should be nineteen.
Item nineteen. We didn't lay two on the table, we deferred it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
A resolution approving the payment with Surcore LLC, Birmingham, in an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars, inclusive of any reimbursable expenses to provide professional engineering services for the Village Creek Greenway Project STPTE, TEO-nine, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
Abbott, Robertson?
Mr. President, I move that we send this to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Send it to committee.
And so we're referring it, Mr. Clerk. Abbott, Robertson?
Budget and Finance. All right, voting should be open on nineteen.
That item passes, it will be referred to Budget and Finance. Next item.
Should be item twenty-nine. Item twenty-nine, a resolution pointing to members of Birmingham Planning Commission, said terms expiring October the sixth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Have a mover and a second.
Move the item?
Second.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning and Zoning Committee has recommended Mr. Michael R. Morrison for reappointment, term ending on October sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. The other appointment, reappointment will be Brian E. Johnson, term ending October sixth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Do we have any other names to be submitted in nomination? We'll close on those two. We're, we're ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
All right, voting should be up.
All right, that item passes, those individuals will be appointed. Next item.
Item thirty-nine. Thirty-nine. Page eleven, a resolution authorizing the director of planning, engineering, and permits to issue condemnation repair permit to Terry W. Ray, the owner or agent of property located at six oh seven Seventy-Fifth Street North, Birmingham, which was condemned by the council on March twenty-eighth, two thousand and six, in order to remove the weeds and the trash from the premises within ten days of permit issuance, and to commence and make substantial repairs within thirty days of permit issuance. Two permits having been voided due to the lack of substantial repairs.
All right, we have a mover and a second.
President, I'd like to move the item for approval?
Second.
Robertson, Abbott, Counselor Scales?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to make sure that the council is aware that the chair and the committee does not support an additional permit for this particular piece of property. We do have photos, if you all would like to look at it, before making your decision, you're more than welcome to do that.
So what's the recommendation?
Recommendation is denial, Mr. President.
Says no recommendation.
Well, that's the reason why I got a clarity before I spoke this morning. What is the wishes of the chair, and the chair is Counselor Tyson. And if you look at those photos, you've read the item, at least the summary anyway, and it has already indicated that two of the permits that have been allowed or permitted, no substantial changes to that property has been done. And if you have any other questions with the mayor's permission, Mr. Willis is here. He can talk about this property in more detail so that you can make a more informed decision.
All right, do we have any other speakers? We're ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
Okay. That vote should be up.
That item fails. Next item should be item forty-two. Thank you, Counselor Scales.
Item forty-two, a resolution setting a public hearing December twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen, to consider adoption of ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the City of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand and fifteen dash seventeen, to change zone district boundaries from O and I Office Institution to District to B-one Neighborhood Business District filed by Richard Bishop, representing the owner of Silvertрон Two Property LLC for property located at thirty-six Twenty-Five Eighth Avenue, situated in the northwest quarter of section thirty-two, township seventeen South Range Two West Birmingham, and this is a first reading.
Mr. President?
Oh, yeah.
Like to move the item?
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
I'll second it. All right, we're ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
Voting should be up. Counselors, thank you. That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item forty-three.
Item forty-three, a resolution setting a public hearing December the twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen, to consider adoption of ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the City of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand and fifteen dash eighteen, to change zone district boundaries from R-three Single Family District to B-one Neighborhood Business District filed by Alexander Turner, representing the owner of Woodlawn Community Church of God for property located at ninety-eight, nine-eight-one Forty-Sixth Street North, situated in the northeast quarter of section twenty, township seventeen South Range Two West Birmingham.
Like to move the item, Mr. President?
Second.
Robertson, Abbott, ready to vote.
All right, voting should be open. That vote should be up.
That item passes. All right, we're back to item sixteen. Or nineteen, no, sixteen.
It's needed a motion to take it from the table.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we take item sixteen off the table.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Okay, do we have someone? We don't. Address that. All right, let's move for a one-week delay.
Second.
Okay.
Austin, Abbott.
One week delay. All right, voting should be open. That vote should be up.
That item passes on a one-week delay. That concludes our, the council agenda. All right. Uh, okay. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Counselors. Last night was the first in a series of town hall meetings, and we had a tremendous turnout in the Oxmo, at the Oxmo Community Center. It gave citizens an opportunity to talk about some of the capital needs that they have in their areas, and I want to thank all the citizens who came out. If you missed the one last night, you still have an opportunity to attend the town hall meeting tomorrow night at six P.M. at Sandusky Husken Hudson Recreation Center. On November the twenty-third, at six o'clock P.M. at Harriman Park, we will also have a town hall meeting there. This evening, we will be having a small reception for the superintendent of schools. Hopefully, each council member received an email concerning that. We'd like to take this opportunity to have an informal discussion and welcoming of the superintendent. She's been there for a while, so she's not exactly new, but now that she's settled in, it will give us an opportunity to just let her know how much we appreciate the work that she's doing. And that's tonight at six o'clock at the Negro Baseball Museum. You know, Mr. President and Counselors, oftentimes, we have employees that go above and beyond the call of duty, and they go unsung, but today I want to bring up Finnis Jackson, who works in our Public Works Department, for a recognition that the Norwood community would like for him to receive. Finnis, if you could come forward.
What is it?
Is it Finnis or Finesse, or is it Finnis with a lot of finesse? I want to read the letter that was submitted with this plaque to Finnis. Mr. Fancy, why don't you come up here and stand with us? This letter comes from the Norwood Community Safety Committee, and it reads as follows. Dear Mr. Jackson, thank you for your assistance at the cleanup community day with the citizens of Norwood Community Safety Committee, Birmingham, Alabama, on April eleventh, two thousand and fifteen. Your presence was well received by citizens of Norwood Community Safety Committee. The care that you took in assisting us was more than what we expected from you. It is people like you who give their time to assist others that is most deserving of recognition. Thank you again for all you do and have done for the citizens of Norwood, of the Norwood community. You help us, your help, you help us to have a successful cleanup day. And it's signed by Dale Curry, the chairman of the Norwood Community Safety Committee. Finnis, on behalf of those citizens and all the citizens, we want to thank you for going above and beyond the call of duty in service to your fellow citizens, so we present this plaque to you on their behalf.
And I want to thank Mr. Fancy here. This is one of the greatest directors I've had. And all, I want to thank all your city councils that give us the people that we need and the equipment to try to go through the city and keep it clean. And everybody's doing a great job, and I just want to thank everybody, and this is great. Thank you.
Thank you, Finnis. I appreciate what you do. The men and women of the Public Works Department, a lot of times are unsung, as the mayor said. And in this instance, I appreciate the public making those comments known and to offer you this reward, this award. And I personally thank you, and I've enjoyed working with you through the years, and I want to give us a lot more. Okay.
That's all I have at this time. Mr. Proton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, Saturday evening was a tough evening in District Seven, as you are aware. We had a fuel tank truck to overturn on Neighbor's Road Southwest. I do want to thank, I see Chief Brooks and Chief Roper in the back for their, Gordon, Gordon, I'm sorry. Forgive me, Chief Brooks.
Chief Gordon.
Chief, I said, no, 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 I was forgiving, Chief Brooks. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Chief Gordon and Chief Roper, the men and women that came out to support those efforts. Chief Gordon, I didn't realize, we had hazmat, decon units from all the way to the east side to travel to the west side to be on site, to get that situation in order. Birmingham Police Department Rest Precinct Chief Roper did an excellent job of communications and kind of giving me update on what was transpiring with the accident. My prayers are for the driver. To my understanding, he had to go to UAB, and he's in stable condition right now. But that raised a huge concern, as I've been on this council and in this seat for six years now. When I first got on, we were addressing the routes of fuel tankers through the neighborhoods. This right here could have been worse than what it really was. When you have eight thousand gallons of fuel to spill on a local street in a residential area, if that ignited, it could have been another situation. So I have Mayor contacted Mr. Greg Dawkins in the Traffic Engineering Department, talked with him, the Alabama Department of Transportation, also some of the loading fuel companies that are in the district to assemble, closed meeting that I'd like for you to be a part of, and any other council members that have issues with fuel tankers coming through their neighborhood next week or so. But I think it's time now that we address this before we see something worse happen, and it could have been a very scary situation. There was a couple houses along that corridor, and it could have been another situation. But I do want to bring some more attention to that, Mayor, with your support and working with your staff, to see what we can do. And I think, Mr. Bidde, as you all are looking at some different routing right now, and just to see how we can collaborate on looking at some more safer corridors of travel for the fuel tank trucks in the future. Thank you.
Counselor Scales?
Thank you, Ms. President. Good morning, Mayor. On eight hundred block of Martin Wood Road, there was a street sign that I know that Traffic and Engineering is aware of, but it's been down now for more than two and a half months. I am clearly aware that the machine was the initial problem, but it's kind of hard to identify whether it be for emergency vehicles or just people visiting residents in the area. To know where to go without a street sign, so it is Martin Wood Road. It's on the corner, sign's still not there, and it needs to be replaced. Also, the entire.
But the cross street?
The cross street would probably, is that from Martin Wood Road? I think that's Martin Wood Lane is the cross street. You got Martin Wood Road straight, Martin Wood Lane would be the intersecting road. Thank you, Mayor, for asking. Also, the entire stretch of Marlin Springs Road, the right-of-ways need to be cut. I rode in that area just a couple of days ago. Uh, I rode in that area, uh, just a couple of days ago, and the right of ways, I asked about them being done a while back, but we got the holidays coming up, and we asked that, uh, we have, uh, folk in the community that take pride in what our community looks like. So on the entire stretch, Marlin Springs Road is only one side of the road that you can cut, which is on the left-hand side, uh, and that needs to be cut, trimmed, and possibly sprayed since, you know, if it's going to be a while before we go back. Also, there are apartments on Sun Hill Road. Uh, Mr. Willis knows about these apartments. Uh, when the permit was issued for this gentleman, he said that he would, uh, get those, uh, apartments, uh, in a living or livable condition, reasonable amount of time, that has not occurred. And so, Mayor, what I'm asking for, because now there are unauthorized or illegal folk who are living at the property, and they are stealing utilities. Uh, we've turned this in, um, to your staff or departments, but I just wanted to make you aware, this is on Sun Hill Road. Uh, so the police department is aware of it, uh, but the bottom line is that if it's a council action that needs to be taken, Mr. President, I'm just interested in knowing what can be done, because this gentleman did not live up to his agreement with the city. Also, there are cedar trees that are preventing motorists from being able to see if you're on Sundale Drive at the intersection of Sundale Drive and Gaston Highway. Uh, got a call about that as well, that motorists are unable to see, uh, as you are turning, if you're on Sundale, is a problem we're seeing to the left-hand side of the road. Uh, and so if we can have those cedar trees limbed up, we'd certainly appreciate it. One last thing that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring to your attention as well, is that we have, um, been told that on, uh, the intersection of Old Springville Road and Brewster Road, uh, we have a traffic light issue there, meaning that you, you don't know exactly which way to turn, and I'm, I'm giving it to you the best that it was given to me. Uh, there is not a designated, uh, turn lane, and so I was told by Mr. Dawkins, who's been responsive, uh, but he did say that it was a, uh, something dealing with the county. And if that be the case, what I'm asking of the mayor's office is that someone from the mayor's office contact the county to let them know that this is an issue, because Brewster Road is a part of Birmingham. But that particular intersection, my understanding, for whatever reason, belongs to the county. So if we can get some assistance with that, Mr. Mayor, we'd certainly appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you. Council Abbott?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I noticed that there is a sign on my block that says, "My block is a top priority," and I just want to know what that means. I'm glad I'm a top priority. I live in a top priority block, but I want to know what it means.
Uh, it, it means that, uh, if there's a lot in that area that we, um, have targeted to be cleaned up according to the schedule, uh, that we give out, and that we want to make sure that citizens know that we are aware of it, and that we're coming back at some point in time to take care of those issues.
Well, good, because a lot of people have asked me what it means, and I didn't know, which was a little bit embarrassing, but now I do know, so thank you.
Council Rafferty?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I've talked to, um, uh, Sri with, uh, I M S. on this about the three-one-one, there's a problem. I, I still am getting complaints where citizens are calling in a complaint, and three-one-one is saying that they can't take the complaint because the complaint's already been taken for that property. And I need to understand why are we not cataloging every complaint that comes in on a property anymore? Because the residents are upset because they feel they're not, they're being told, well, it's not that important because it's already in the system.
I, I, I agree with you, and I need to, um, sit down and get an understanding, and probably at the next, um, committee meeting of the whole, we'll have Mr. Carr come in, uh, explain to you the details as to how the system work. But there should be some tally as to the number of people who called in about a particular, uh, location.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. There any other speakers? Mayor, I had one thing, I was, um, you know, as we, as we, uh, employ individuals to work in our communities and our neighborhoods, whether they go to our neighborhood meetings or things like that, um, Council Lundy has, I think, four, uh, individuals that he's trying to, um, employ and bring on board in his office. I think they worked for him last year, but after the new budget, uh, was passed, he, uh, submitted some names, four people, I just don't have their names in front of me, but he said that those contracts have not been signed yet, and, or appointed.
I'm evaluating them.
You're, do, when do you plan on signing those? Because he said, I think, that it's been, um, two months since he submitted those to the council, I believe, as, I don't even think the council had to vote on them because they're less than ten thousand dollars, but, uh, he needs to go ahead and get those, those, uh, employees or those individuals contracted. So do you, when do you plan on signing those, Mr. Mayor?
I haven't had time to evaluate them, but I, I'm in that process now, and I'll get with Mr. Lundy.
Okay. All right, um, do we have, go ahead.
I did have one other thing. Um, Mr. Mayor, because we've had a string of carjackings, I do know that, uh, and it's involving women, and I know that some of these suspects have now been apprehended, but we've been having a large crime spree that is happening in our city. And, uh, I know the president is very concerned about it. He and I talked about it, and I just want to know, what is the, the city's, um, plan of action that we're going to put in place? Um, you know, I, I know that you can't stop individuals from doing what they do. How we handle it is another. Uh, and, and so I just wanted to ask you, Mayor, quite frankly, um, what is the city's plan of action? Not just about the carjacking, but we, we've had homicides, we've had a whole lot of stuff going on, and I, I read what people say, pray for Birmingham, but I believe watch, pray, and work. So I'm just interested in know, knowing what we're going to do about that, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Chief. Yes, sir.
Uh, good morning to the council and-
Good morning.
To the mayor. Uh, and to the, the audience. And you too. Okay, I see you pointing at yourself, uh, just to the staff members, uh, in case he felt left out. But this, this crime issue is one that we're extremely concerned about. Uh, I was sharing with someone last night that all across the nation, we are being challenged in our urban areas, and most criminologists can't, can't put their fingers on it. They're saying, we can't draw a trend line just off of one year, but here lately, we've had some horrific crimes, um, involving people who know each other. We've had crimes where, you know, our one-year-old homicide victim and the eight-year-old and that whole family dynamic piece is just something that is so shocking, but yet it occurred in our city. Uh, regarding the, the carjackings, we have arrested several individuals. There's more that we're looking for. Crime doesn't have a boundary, so these same individuals are not just affecting Birmingham, but the whole metro area, so we're working with other law enforcement agents and sharing information on that. And we'll catch one group, we'll, we'll make an apprehension, and another group will pop up, but what we're seeing is more crime amongst young people, uh, and so we're working against that. We do have our Violence Reduction Initiative that we just launched this year, uh, and so we, we have a lot of promise in that, because it's been successful, uh, in other cities across the nation. This time of the year, on Saturday, we just started, uh, a new operation where we have extra officers on the street, uh, throughout the rest of this year, so we're working that also. But what we really need is more community involvement, uh, because we can't be everywhere. I wish we could, and, and some of the homicides, just out of sensitivity to the family members, we don't say quite often everything that occurred in it, just being sensitive to the family members, but one thing about our homicides, they are not random at all. Uh, quite often, they involve risky lifestyles and people who know each other, and so those are the ones that are most difficult to prevent.
I appreciate it. Excuse me, Mr., well, I was about to say, Mr. Mayor, but to you, Chief. Um, I know that you're trying to do the best that you can do, um, and I know that it's going to take, um, some additional, um, boots on the ground, uh, and it's going to take us as a community to not stand for it.
That's right.
And report what we see to the best that we can, and, and get away from this, stop snitching stuff. We got to tell what we see, um, and only thing that I can tell you that has really been alarming for me is that when we talk about the positives of Birmingham, kind of hard to have a delegation here, and then you got all of this crime that's being discussed at the same time. And, you know, I tell people all the time, I do live in the real world, not a cartoon, uh, film, so at the end of the day, people watch that. And, and we want everybody in every community to feel safe. So whatever that is, Mr. Chief, if, if you can, can make the council, uh, aware of whatever discussions that you can publicly say, uh, I know we're having a committee of the whole meeting, Mr. President, and this is more for the media, uh, is going to be speaking, uh, having a press conference right after council meeting to talk about this, because we can't go silent like it's not happening. It's, it's happening, and the holidays are right around the corner, and it's making it even more intensified. So I want to thank you, and the men and women who serve our city, you're doing the best job that you can do, but if you can tell us as a legislative body, anything that we can do to help empower the mayor to help you and your staff, we want to be able to do that. Because I, I'm very serious. I, I used to like when they had McGruff talking about taking a bite out of crime, but we got to start running some P S As, talking about taking a bite out of crime seriously, uh, so folk know that it's not Mountain Brook and Hoover that you better be concerned about. You better think about you doing that in Birmingham, what's going to happen to you. So I know we're in a city, I just don't accept inner-city excuses for why we do what we do. Makes sense.
Oh, it sure does. We've got to value life in our communities, and, and I don't have a problem saying this, but black lives need to matter to black people.
Amen.
And, and until we get that philosophy and that mindset where it's not acceptable, it's not acceptable, uh, and I don't see the anger when one young black man shoot another young black man. I don't see the community anger, and that frustrates me because I'm about to get mad right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And hey, and guess what, Chief, and that's from one black person to another. I understand, all lives matter. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you. I'd like to move for unanimous consent to approve, uh, travel for Bakar Malden to Houston, Texas, administrative assistance from the mayor October twentieth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, for Cities of Service Convention, the amount of twelve hundred seventy-three dollars and three cents, and these funds are, will be reimbursed with grant funds from the Cities of Service.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item passes. Um, let's move to suspend the rules of our speakers.
So move. Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, Lee Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, Willie Jenkins, to the Honorable Mayor, the City Council, I'd like to say, uh, we're getting ready for our red and blue ball, Carver High School Alumni National Alumni, uh, food, and it's going to be on the twenty-third, uh, uh, December, and also we'll be at Jackson Street, December the twentieth, Mr. Mayor, we'll be Santa Claus, December the twentieth on my birthday. And, um, I'd like to say, um, and then the Carver High School, uh, we'd like to, for everybody to come, and, uh, tickets is, uh, I think thirty dollars. It's going to be, uh, on the twentieth, on the twenty-third at Carver High School, and the Men of Praise, like I said, Men of Praise will be at Jackson Street on the twentieth at, um, three o'clock, and on the, that'll be on the, um, December the twentieth. And I'd like to say, uh, yeah, Christmas right around the corner, Thanksgiving, what I'd like to say, District Four, William Park, and that, let's say, all the District Four of Cottageville, William Park, Allison, would I just say, happy Thanksgiving to, um, Cottageville, special, everybody, Thanksgiving, hope they have a happy Thanksgiving, God continue to bless you, Thanksgiving. And I, I'd like to say, we had a wonderful time, then the Carver High, the Rams, the Mighty Rams, yeah, um, getting ready for the basketball season now, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, I seen, uh, Will in the Venn Day Parade, that was a nice, uh, got you in the seat, uh, it was in the, I was in the Venn Day Parade, Carver High School Alumni, so I always anticipate, we always anticipate, we're going to have a, may have a float next year, we got to discuss, the, uh, the whole alumni are going to be in there next year for the, the mighty Carver High School, uh, um, parade for the, uh, uh, next year, we hope to see, um, next year we'll be in there next year. So that's all I'd like to say is that, uh, that, uh, that get ready, um, Carver Rams, that we, um, getting ready for the Christmas celebration, all the high school, wishing everybody happy Christmas, Merry Christmas to everybody coming up this year. That's all I'd like to say. And my pastor will give me appreciation, like I said, Bishop Wood, congratulation from Bishop Wood, God marry. I was at the wedding, I was late, but I was, we had a wedding congratulation, God bless you, Bishop Calvin Wood and Brian, God bless you. Made it more, made one of these days, I don't know when that will be. Congratulations, dude, God bless you.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
A, as you can tell, Bishop Wood still has that honeymoon smile on his face, and I just want to add my congratulations as well.
Congratulations. All right, um, that concludes our speakers. Council Rafferty? Over to you, business.
Yes, all I have before me is, uh, to announce the vacancy, there is a vacancy on the Birmingham Parking Authority Board. Um, resumes will be accepted, uh, up until Wednesday, November twenty-fifth. You can call two five four two zero three eight for more information of how to file your resume and your letter of interest. The, the next, uh, point, Mr. Mayor, actually, I wanted to talk to you, um, I'm not sure what we as a city can do, and this is something I kind of wanted to refer to, um, uh, to Chief Roper as well. There's at least one event center in our district, Council Scales, you need to see this, at least one event center in our district that is being, um, run by a daycare that is advertising for teen parties using adult material. And I know that we have restrictions on event centers concerning, uh, the sale of liquor, but is there any way that we can start addressing this issue with, uh, marketing to, to teens, specifically to teens, adult material, and inviting them to parties for twerk-a-thons and twerk-fests, and, um, who's the, the baddest naked woman in the teens?
I, I, I don't know, but, uh, we can, um, have, I think Officer Patterson, Detective Patterson-
They've been investigated.
Is in charge of that, uh, why don't you reach out to him and see what can be done, and, um, I'll also look into some other, uh, legal issues as to whether or not, uh, we can take any type of action to prevent that.
Thank you, sir.
Council Abbott?
Oh, I think I'm, I'm done.
Your announcements. Council Scales?
Thank you, Ms. President. As always, I want to thank the citizens of District One, as well as the City of Birmingham, for affording me the opportunity to be their voice. Uh, before I get started, I do want to say congratulations to an eighty-four-year-old handsome, uh, groom that I saw. Eighty-two? I thought they told me eighty-four, so I won't add on, uh, but I, I saw your beautiful blushing bride on social media, and I said, wow! At first, I thought like, is that real? And then they said, yeah, and I said, oh, wow, Bishop is alive and well. So congratulations, Bishop Calvin Woods, uh, on your beautiful wedding. Uh, it looked very beautiful. Um, I also want to thank Faith Chapel Christian Center, uh, there was a, uh, Feeding of the Homeless that took place over this past weekend. Um, very proud to even be a part of a membership that understands that it's not about preaching you the word of God, but living the word of God, and because of that, uh, everybody that, that has been created has been created by God. And so because of that, um, there was Baptist Health Systems, uh, Princeton, U A B, Sanford University, um, people providing, um, even dental and so forth, and, and I stood outside and cried outside of City Hall, uh, because I saw people who are very vulnerable, and they need us, and because they need us, anytime that, uh, we know that the holidays are rolling around, we want to be as a city that's always in the spirit of giving and taking care of his own, and I do believe that charity begins at home and then it spreads abroad. I would like to also make note that there is a special neighborhood meeting that's going to be held tonight with Kilo Springs, uh, they meet at seven o'clock, that'll be at Smith Middle School, so if you're interested in, in going to that particular meeting, uh, they are having that, uh, on tonight. Also, I want to tell everybody, uh, that in this spirit of Thanksgiving, uh, I know that there are two fire departments, one police department, but I always serve as all three. You know, go by your police and fire department and let the folk know at Public Works how much you really appreciate them, and I want to say to all of the city employees under the sound of my voice, how much I appreciate you. you. I know that there are a lot of times that the focus, uh, is on Public Works and Police Department and Fire Department, but I care about you too, and I know the council does as well. Uh, we, we want to just say a good thank you because the public is our customer, and how you treat the public says a lot about our city. So, you know, I just want to say again, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I do want to thank, Mr. President, Counselor Lundey, who's the presiding, uh, council member, uh, over our church at Faith Chapel, and they came out on yesterday, uh, did a fantabulous job, uh, and I believe that they represented the council well. Again, I'm thankful to Chief Roper, uh, for speaking about the wave of crime that has been happening. Uh, we cannot forget, we cannot let these cases grow cold, and more importantly, as a community, we got to talk. We got to talk. We got to talk. It's never a crime to dial 911, and you can remain anonymous. That's very important because I know my seniors are concerned about that, and individuals are concerned about folk who would want to retaliate against you. But just remember, 911, you can remain anonymous. And again, Mr. President, I want to thank you and Counselor Lundey, uh, for coming out and supporting the church on yesterday, and, uh, and we're very grateful. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Abbott, you had a follow-up?
Well, I did. The, um, we are having a Budget and Finance Committee meeting. I thought I should mention that. It will be on November 23rd at 4:00 PM in the afternoon, and all submissions, um, had to be in by last Wednesday, so, um, that's, well, by Wednesday, November 18th. And also, the, um, I wanted to comment on the Limbaugh Toyota, oh, grand opening, because that was very, very nice. And that Samurai sword that Toyota gave to Bruce Limbaugh and his brother was, was pretty impressive. Um, I didn't want to pull it out of its sheath in case it was really, really sharp. But, uh, that's a beautiful dealership, and it's great that we kept them in Birmingham and kept them in that location. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for your team's efforts. Uh, you have some good people working for you, and it all worked out great. And, uh, we have no neighborhood meetings, just a Regional Planning Commission meeting tomorrow, and this is a pretty quiet week. Look what time it is. Something's going on.
You done?
I am.
Mr. Protiem?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, uh, Counselor Hoyt's announcements for our District Eight. Um, he has scripture from the Timothy, Book of Timothy, Fourth Chapter, 12, verse, "Set an example for the believers in speech, in life, in love, in faith, and in purity." Uh, his announcements, Green Acres Neighborhood Association Meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 17th at 6:30 at Christ Worship Center. McAlpine Neighborhood Association Meeting will be held on Thursday, the 19th, at 6:00 at McAlpine Recreation Center. Uh, congratulations to Reverend James Dunn, pastor of the 23rd Street Missionary Baptist Church, who will be celebrating their 94th church anniversary on Sunday, uh, this coming Sunday, November the 22nd. Uh, he has one more announcement with a flyer, uh, the Second Annual Sickle Cell Disease on Canvas. Uh, this is November the 17th, 2015, which is today, at 6:00. Uh, the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, uh, come out and celebrate the arts with those, uh, living with sickle cell disease. Uh, you're invited to a reception program and viewing of the exhibits for sickle cell disease on Canvas, Canvas. Uh, this is again at the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute at 6:00 PM this evening. Now to my announcements. Uh, I did, uh, recognize Bishop Calvin Woods and his very beautiful, uh, matrimony, uh, that you had on, uh, I saw it via social media also, as Counselor Scales referred to it. I don't know if it's the hooping or whatever you're doing to keep the zeal going in your life, but it seemed to work. And, uh, so I might need to sit down with you and get a few lessons when I get, get in my 80s. So I do, uh, congratulate you and the bride, the first lady, uh, and, uh, much, uh, love and much prosperous time with both, for the both of you all in the future. Uh, I do want to recognize my mother. She, uh, celebrated her birthday on yesterday. Uh, happy birthday, uh, to Mary from Jesus. Uh, you are truly a beautiful mother, and, uh, I've always been your little Jesus. So I do, uh, want to tell you, uh, Mom, I love you, and, uh, happy birthday to you. Uh, also, happy anniversary to my sister, Jamia. She celebrated her first anniversary, uh, this past weekend up in Chattanooga with her husband, where they're living now. Uh, happy verse, birthday, uh, happy anniversary to you, uh, up in Chattanooga. I had an enjoyable time at Arrington Middle School on this past Friday, speaking to the Driven Mentoring Program. Uh, Mayor, that's a tremendous program that Anthony Moss is doing with the young men, uh, at Arrington Middle School. Enjoyed tying ties and, uh, giving them a word of encouragement, uh, as it relates to, uh, how young men should be and what we should do, uh, to be productive citizens in the future. Uh, they're doing a fine job over there at Arrington Middle School. And thank you, Ms. Perry, the Assistant Principal, for that invite. Uh, Mayor, we, uh, attended the SUSE Japan Conference that's been going on here, and it's truly tremendous, uh, to see the turnout of, uh, uh, those that were, that were, uh, in attendance, uh, throughout the past few days. I talked to John Ores, the, uh, president now of the Convention and Visit Bureau. He's looking to see the numbers and economic impact of what, uh, the SUSE Japan Conference, uh, meant to the city of Birmingham. So it's truly a good celebration, uh, throughout the week and a great, uh, few days for the city of Birmingham. I want to congratulate Coach Cheatham on a great football season. Uh, they didn't pull it through against Baltimore Jordan, uh, in the second round of playoffs. They lost 30 to 20, uh, but we know the high school, uh, football team went 10-1 this season, uh, tremendous season for the Dragons, and congratulations to Coach Cheatham. I do have two neighborhood meetings, uh, this week, on Thursday at 6:00, Hillman, and at 6:00, Germania Park, at South Park Baptist Church. Uh, the Planning Zoning Committee, Counselor Abbott and Hoyt, the Design Review Committee has a vacancy for a building trade, uh, position or like-experienced applicant. The term will expire on June 30th, 2016. Please submit all applications, uh, to Christopher Hatcher in the Planning Department. Again, there's a, Design Review Committee has a vacancy, uh, for someone that has, uh, experience in building trade or the like. Uh, please submit that application, uh, to Chris Hatcher in the Planning Department. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, two neighborhood meets Crestwood North meets Monday, November 23rd, 6:30 to 7:30 at Glen Iris. Druid Hills meets Monday, November 23rd, from 6:30 to 7:30 at St. James Missionary Baptist Church. Uh, council, please be reminded that we have, um, a special call committed, the whole meeting's today at 5:00. And Mayor, I'll make sure that I put in writing the request for, um, Counselor Lundey as well as, um, Mr. Perkins, uh, the contracts, and I'll make sure I send that to you and copy the rest of the council on it. Counselor Rafferty, you have something?
Yes, I failed to, I, I also request from the administration if a member of the Law Department and the Police Department could come and answer questions during the committee of the whole meeting today. Uber?
Transportation Network Code. All right, uh, we want to thank Officer Lewis with the Downtown Substation for providing our security today. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Aye. All opposed? This meeting is adjourned.